Good evening and welcome to tonight's Homewood City Council meeting, May 18th, 2020. We are still in the midst of a pandemic with optional use of face mask for our meeting, including myself. But we're going to proceed through our meeting and through our agenda, and we're going to go and call tonight's meeting to order. We will begin with an invocation and pledge.
Walter Jones.
And Walter Jones is going to help us with our invocation, and then we'll follow the pledge. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Lord, for bringing us here together as a council. We remember many people who are suffering tonight, and we wish for speedy recovery for all those that are suffering. We especially lift up the cousin of Barry Smith's family in our prayers tonight. And we also pray for Mazie Squires as well, who's had some issues. So we pray all of this and hope you give us guidance in our meeting tonight and strength so that we may serve you in the community. All this we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll begin with roll call vote. Melody?
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Tames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And President Wright?
Here.
All present, you got it, boy.
Thank you. So all present. First time we'll entertain a motion to approve minutes from May 11th, 2020.
Sub move.
By Mr. Tames.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the minute... Yes, sir.
In the minutes, it showed that JJ was here at the meeting, I think. Did I read that wrong? And he was not. He was here by Zoom.
I can correct the discussion. That's okay. We have to do the motion on the jury.
All right, so we can amend it with that subject to that approval. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next item, we're going to look at some board vacancies. First with the guard to the Board of Adjustments, which closed on May 11th, 2020. Did we have any applicants for that? Melody?
The Board of Adjustments, no, sir. That's the one where we have seven vacancies, but they have to have a certain amount of construction experience. So you said we'd probably just readdress that later because we've had two applicants in the past, but Mr. P said they didn't meet the... They have to live in Homewood and have a certain amount of construction experience. And that board only meets infrequently if they want to appeal a decision that BEZ makes. So you can reopen it now, or you said we'd address it later.
It's really the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. It's a construction interpretation interprets building codes, so it's not the Board of Adjustments.
Well, yeah, right. And the, for adjustment appeals, is there a need for us to scurry about to fill seven vacancies?
I believe they have continued to serve until their successors are reappointed. So I don't think there's an absence of an ability to serve. Certainly their terms may have...
All right. Okay, without objection, then let's just, let's just take that one out of rotation, if we will, and...
I think that the terms have expired quite a while ago, so I don't know if people even know that they're still on it. So, I mean, like I said, we'd only need it if somebody appeals, Mr. P, but...
All right, that still may be something to look at as to how we're going to handle that in the future, but let's just take that one out of, out of rotation right now. All right, that'll get us to our next one, which is Library Board, which closed on May 1st, 2020. This is for Ward 4, and as I understand, we do have an applicant or an applicant to be approved.
We actually had two applicants, and Alex and I conducted interviews by Zoom, and we would move to appoint Paul Doran as the Ward 4 Library Board Representative.
So I have a motion to approve Paul Doran as the new Ward 4 representative to the library by Mrs. Smith, and a second by Mr. Wyatt. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a procedural question?
Absolutely.
But I'll preface it by saying I have absolutely no objection to Paul being on the library board. I know we limit people to two terms on the library board. Is there a specific amount of time they have to sit out before they can come back to the board?
We did look into...
...with Debbie Salter, I think, with her bylaws, and he was eligible to come back.
Fantastic. I just wanted to make sure that we were...
We cleared it. We did.
We were aware of his previous service. Paul, be a fabulous board.
Yes, he's very excited.
Great, okay, so thank you for that. And so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so congratulations to Mr. Doran and Melody, if you'll let him know, and Laura McBarry and Alex, I suppose. All right, so that's going to get us into tonight's meeting. And first, I need to make, so everybody just sit tight, we have a few additions to the agenda, no less than eight of them, because we did have committee meetings just prior to our council meeting tonight. All right, so first, we're going to add to old business the following items. 181119, which is a request for consideration of Parking Management System RFI, coming to us from Councilors Andy Waltney and Britt Tames, and that's going to be added to our old business agenda. 110320, request for consideration to place video streaming technology in the council committee room for the purpose of recording and broadcasting committee meetings. This one coming to us from Councilor Higginbotham. Again, that's going to be on our old business agenda. 050520, request to consider compensation for the absentee election manager as allowed by the Code of Alabama. This coming from our city attorney and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. And also the old business 200220, request to consider plaza and parking improvements, an item coming from Councilors Andrews, Waltney, and Tames, again, also being added to our old business agenda. And 010520, request for permission to allow parking area to extend partially into the right-of-way at 401 Staret Avenue, coming from Jim Hoy and Wyatt Hugh and Greg Cobb with our BEZ department. 040520, request to consider ordinance to call and provide for the general municipal election to be held in the city of Homewood on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, and to provide for a runoff election, if required, on Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, if required. That's coming to us from our city attorney and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. And lastly, being added to the old business is 060520, request to consider approving the use of ES and SDS dash 200 tabulator system, an express vote, or an electronic vote counting system, as will be supplied by Jefferson County, for the 2020 City of Homewood Municipal Election, as complies with the Code of Alabama. This one also coming to us from our city attorney and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director.
Hey, Peter, I have one quick question.
Yes.
The 010520 about the parking thing, I thought that was going to the consent agenda because it was dropped.
It's correct.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I do have it. I was about to get into it. All right, I had it in both places.
Okay.
All right, so other than 010520, that should be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 going to the business, old business agenda, and I have two items going to the consent agenda, and thank you, Ms. Smith, one of those being 010520, which is the request for permission to allow a parking area to extend partially into the right-of-way at 401 Staret Avenue. Also going to our consent agenda, 160719, which is a request for consideration of trash issues on Huntington, which was an item from Kathy Taylor and Counselor Jennifer Andrews. Again, that will be added to our consent agenda as well. And so with those two items, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Sub move.
And Mr. Harden, and second by Ms. Andrews, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the agenda is approved as amended. And our first item of business will be our consent agenda. With those two items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second by Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. McCloskey. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It was Mr. Jones and Mr. McCloskey. All right, then that's going to get us into our old business agenda. We have 070520, a public hearing that's going to be set for June 8th at 6:00 PM for consideration of property at 7:20 Shades Creed Parkway from an I-2 institutional district to a C-1 office building district, coming to us from Shoal Engineering Company, Shades Valley Evangelical Lutheran Church for the purpose to rezone an eastern portion of approximately 1.289 acres. And that came out of planning commission with a 7-0 favorable vote. That will be coming to us for a public hearing, June 8th, next month. All right, first item to take up for old business agenda, 181119, which is a request for consideration of Parking Management System RFI, again, this coming to us from our counselors, Andy Waltney and Britt Tames. And I'll begin, I believe, with reports from both Finance and Public Works on this. I'll begin with Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met tonight, well, this afternoon at 4:00, and after much discussion, voted 5 to 0 to send this to budget hearings for the new budget.
Okay. All right, hearing all that with a favorable vote out of Finance, I was just going to take up for a vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we're coming out of Finance that item, we'll be going to our budget consideration process, I guess, starting in September. Public Works, do we still have an item in Public Works?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. 181119, request for consideration of a Parking Management System RFI was a motion to table made by Mr. Counselor McCloskey and seconded by Counselor Wyatt.
All right, so thank you. So that's coming out of Public Works, favorable vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that item will come up for our budget discussions. Thank you both. All right, 110320, request for consideration to place video streaming technology in the council committee room for the purpose of recording broadcasting committee meetings. This coming to us from Counselor Higginbotham, and we will begin with a report from Finance on this item. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight and voted 5 to 0 to recommend sending this to budget hearings as well.
All right, so thank you. No need for resolution on that one then. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that item will be taken up on budget talks as well. 050520, request to consider compensation for the absentee election manager as allowed by the Code of Alabama, this coming to us from our city attorney and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. And again, we'll begin with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend expenditure up to $2,300. That's $50 per day for 46 days, coming out of the city clerk salaries line item. So 5 to 0 out of Finance.
All right, 5 to 0 favorable vote out of Finance. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that's going to pass 11 to 0 vote, and that will be resolution 20-75. Thank you. Next item is going to be 200220, which is a request to consider plaza and parking improvements. This coming to us from counselors Andrews, Waltney, and Tames. And for 200220, we'll begin with a report from PND. Mr. Tames?
Yes, sir. The committee met this afternoon and after discussions, voted 4 to 0 to send to budget hearings. Counselor Wyatt and Andrews made motions.
All right, so this is another item proposed to go to our budget hearings. Favorable vote coming out of PND. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so I don't think I need a resolution on this one either, so thank you. Next item is 040520, which is a request to consider an ordinance to call and provide for the general municipal election to be held in the city of Homewood on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, and to provide for runoff election, if required, on Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. This item coming to us from our city attorney and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. And we begin on this one with a report from Special Issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, the committee met prior to tonight's meeting and voted to approve calling our election. Mr. McCloskey made the motion, Mr. Higginbotham seconded, it was a 5 to 0 vote.
Okay, so we will have a, on an ordinance, we will have a first reading for this item. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. It's an ordinance to call and provide for the general municipal election to be held in the city of Homewood on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, and to provide for a runoff election on Tuesday, October 6th, if required by law. The order named as follows, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 114621, as last amended, the city council will hold a municipal election, as required by law, on August 25th, 2020, for the purpose of electing a mayor to be elected from the city at large, and a board of aldermen consisting of a president to be elected from the city at large, and two aldermen, members of the city council from each ward. Section 2, the following places shall be designated as polling places or voting centers for the city of Homewood. Ward 1, Homewood Recreation Center. Ward 2, Senior Citizen Center. Ward 3, Edgewood Elementary School. Ward 4, Homewood Public Library. Ward 5, Shades Cobble School. Section 3, that the mayor shall give and call to be given the notice of the election on July 7th, 2020, at which time the notice will say, will state as follows, that sets out the notice of election as required by the Code of Alabama, which lists all the wards, Ward 1, Place 1, Place 2, Ward 2, Place 1, Place 2, Ward 3, Place 1, Place 2, Ward 4, Place 1, Place 2, and Ward 5, Place 1, Place 2, as well as the president of the city council and the mayor of the city. It sets out the same polling places. It sets out that the polling places shall be open for voting from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Central Daylight Savings Time, and if runoff election is to be required, that it will be held on Tuesday, October 6th at the same places. Section 4 sets out the proposed ballot, which would include the election for mayor, president of the council, and each of the wards is identified, Place 1 and Place 2 for each ward. Section 6, that not less than 15 days prior to the election, the city shall appoint qualified electors of each respective ward, and expector of registration list clerk, a poll list, and a ballot clerk, and one, a first and second administrative clerk for each voting machine at each of the polling places. Section 7, that the mayor shall publish a list of election officials as adopted by the city council, as required by law. Section 8, the mayor shall cause a list of qualified electors who reside within the corporate limits, who are registered, who will be eligible to vote. That provision also provides if a mayor is a candidate for office in such municipal election, that the city clerk is appointed as the city official and absentee election manager to undertake the duties otherwise required by the mayor. Section 9, the mayor shall call to be printed ballots of those who have qualified as of 5:00 PM on July 21st, 2020. Section 10, that a school of instruction shall be held of those who will conduct the election, as required by law. Section 11, that on, at noon on September 1st, 2020, and on October 13th, 2020, if a runoff election, the city council will convene and canvass the returns for the election. Section 3, that the records of the election canvassing taken by the city council is provided in paragraph above, will be made a part of the minutes of the city council meeting. Section 13, that the mayor and city clerk are authorized and directed to pay out a general fund fees to the library, Edgewood Elementary, and Shades Cobble, or other facilities necessary to hold the election. Section 14, that the election shall be held in all respects, as required by law, in conjunction with the laws of the state of Alabama for relating to regular municipal elections.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. All right, so with that first reading behind us, I will entertain a motion for unanimous consent on this item.
Sub move.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Wyatt. Roll call vote, Melody, please.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So that is 11 to 0 vote, and we can now take up the motion itself. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the item.
Sub move. Second.
By Mr. McCloskey, second by Mr. Waltney, and another roll call vote. Melody?
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes, another 11 to 0 vote, and that will be ordinance 2774. Thank you all. Next item, 060520, which is a request to consider approving use of ES and SDS dash 200 tabulator system, an express vote, or an electronic vote counting system, as will be supplied by Jefferson County for the 2020 City of Homewood Municipal Election, as complies with the Code of Alabama. This one, again, coming from our city attorney and our city clerk and assistant finance director, Ms. Salter. And we'll begin with a report from Special Issues on this item. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, we met prior to the meeting, and Jefferson County has new voting machines, so we have to let the Secretary of State know what we will be using, and it also authorizes Melody to communicate with Jefferson County to secure the proper number of machines for our election. And the motion was made by Mr. McCloskey, seconded by Ms. Andrews, and approved 5 to 0.
Okay, coming out of Special Issues with a 5 to 0 vote. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that's going to be resolution 20-76. And that will get us to our committee referral agenda. Now I'll entertain a motion for approval of our committee referral agenda. By Mr. Higginbotham, second by Mr. Tames. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, referral agenda is approved, and that gets us all the way down to other new business. And I believe we just have one item. 150520, which is a request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 12th, 2020 through May 18th, 2020, coming from our finance director and assistant city clerk, Robert Burgett, and Melody Salter. And who had the honors? Oh, it's, Mr. Jones, I'm fully proud of you for stepping up and being Finance Director. So, I mean, Finance, Finance, Finance Chairman.
Easy.
Robert just dropped off the thing.
I'm sorry. I promoted you. I said Finance Director. I was so proud of you for stepping up. I just, you know.
Well, I appreciate it. He probably did it for me. For Dr. President. We have, we have enlisted Mr. Harden. He's in the voucher university course, and he's a 10-minute class.
Voucher 101.
Yes, that's right. We're in the 101 section right now. So he'll get up to speed very quickly, but I'm happy to, happy to help, and I appreciate Ms. Smith, all the times you've been doing that. But we'll, we'll transition, and Mr. Burgett is going to help as well. So I've had several questions, but I got everything answered, so I would, I would move for approval of the vouchers from May 12th to May 18th.
And I would second.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Approval, I mean, motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so vouchers are approved through May 18th, 2020. That's going to be resolution 20-77.
And Mr. Jones, you didn't play the late acts, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that gets us to our announcements, and we are connected by Zoom. Do we have the mayor on? Andy, you know we have the mayor on?
Yes.
All right, the mayor?
Hey, Peter.
Hey, there.
Thank y'all very, very, very much. The things on the agenda that's going directly to the budget for consideration for next year, I'll, I'll get with those of you on those things individually, because we're already, our department heads are already working, putting their budget together.
Good.
Hear me.
Yeah, got you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, all right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. And we'll begin with Mr. Waltney's announcements.
Well, first, I'd like to set Public Works for the first, I assume, at about 3:00, 5:30? So the only comment that I have this evening is, I'm glad to be back in person, for one, but I'm excited about the progress that we're seeing in 18th Street right now. The beautification project has kicked off on the east side of the road, and you can see a lot of the light, lighting, electrical cable going in, the cuts being made for the curbs that are going to go in. I'm excited for, to see a project that's been, I think, in the works since before I was on council, finally get, get started to build, but something good.
Since y'all went to elementary school.
Yeah, that's about right. But it's looking good. I know there's some minor inconveniences, but it was, this was a good time to kick it off, and we have lower volumes in the street, so that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Tames?
Okay, I set PND for 5:45. And of course, echo what Andy just said, but also it's exciting to see some of our businesses opening back up. Got to go sit down in a restaurant on 18th Street the other day with my family and eat, and it was a surreal experience. So just please continue to support our, our local businesses and restaurants, and because it's not over yet, but things are moving in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Higginbotham?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Keep it short and sweet. Just thank you guys for giving me my birthday off next Monday night, so.
I thought it was a national holiday. We're still meeting?
All right. You're giving me the night off?
Okay, got you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Is that it?
That's it, but my son keeps telling me he's giving me the countdown every single day on how many days it is to my birthday, so. That's all right.
That's, that's, that's the extent of your announcements to your constituents, is that it's your birthday this weekend. All right, Mr. McCloskey?
I don't know, Mrs. Andrews, do you think there's going to be anything in regards to the Alabama power for the turn signal at 31 and 29th Avenue? Because if not, that's the only item I've got on the agenda.
Don't call it then.
Okay, so we won't call public safety for the first, but I do want to say congratulations to all the seniors from the high school that are, that actually have, I guess, graduated or are about to. And then to the rising freshmen, I know I have one who's leaving the middle school, going to the high school, and I have another one who is a fifth grader going to the middle school, and neither one of them got to, because of COVID, got to tour the new school, so it's going to be fantastic come, come fall to see them figure out the high school and the middle school with, with no help to begin with. So hopefully the, the school board can come up with something before then. But again, congratulations to all those seniors. They've worked really hard. I know this is not the, the way that they wanted to, to end their scholastic time at Homewood, but they've, they've done a great job, so congratulations to them. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance will be at 5:00 on the first, and just happy to see businesses open and hope open and hope we continue to, you know, to look, look at better numbers and, and we get everything back to more of a normal type cycle. So just keep everybody in your thoughts about that. And that's all I had tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith and Mrs. Wyatt.
All right.
Whatever it is.
Mr. and Ms. Smith Wyatt. Okay, Mrs. Smith, please.
Brett, when did you say? How long is? So six, okay. All right, so I will call special issues for six. And the Historic Preservation Commission is having a Zoom meeting tomorrow night that Ms. Melody noticed for us. So if anybody's interested, y'all can tune into that for Zoom, for Zoom. And thank you, Walter, for mentioning my cousin, for those of you who did not know previously. My, my cousin Kevin Kraft was attacked yesterday, he and his wife, in Nashville by a homeless guy with a machete. And they were both critically injured. And he is in surgery right now to repair some vascular damage, which will hopefully make sure he's able to walk. So if y'all could just continue to keep Kevin and Leanne in your prayers, because it's a really evil thing that happened to them. So.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And Mr. Wyatt?
I appreciate them, Mr. Wyatt. I just wanted to thank Meredith Drennan at the Chamber. She has been putting on periodic Zoom conferences about various things and picking up on some other ones that have been done nationally to keep our businesses sort of informed of what possibilities are out there with everything from government loans to restrictions and what's going on with the public health officials as well. She had one, another one last week that I was a part of, and Dr. Eaton, the mayor, and I think it went well. And I just appreciate her putting all those together and keeping our business, our business leaders informed of all the opportunities that they have for them.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Andrus?
I wanted to let everybody know, next week, on May the twenty seventh at two o'clock, we are going to drop our first litter getter into Griffin Creek. So we would love to invite everybody. And I'll send you the information. We want to kind of make a production out of it by, but still, we feel like there's enough space there that everybody can spread out. And so we'll be at the curve, you know, where Broadway kind of curves around, just south of Salter. And anyway, the Freshwater Land Trust will be there, Berkeley will be there. And like I said, we kind of want to celebrate. So I'll, I'll send you all the information. You can send it out to your constituents as well. We are also looking to reschedule our counselor roundtable for next week. So I don't know if you guys can join us, Ward one, but we're, we're going to try to do an in-person meeting at Vulcan spaced out. And we do have an announcement on our inner city recycling challenge. We did make a little bit of an improvement, but Mountain Brook was the winner. So we will all be making a donation to the Firehouse Shelter in honor of Mountain Brook. And we're also getting twenty five hundred dollars from the Community Foundation and twenty five hundred dollars from Birmingham Recycling and Recovery, Recovery Recycling. So another five thousand dollars. What's that? It was very confusing, right?
The stay at home or the people.
Well, and April was just a total disaster. But I, but I, I still don't really understand it.
It was a conspiracy. Mountain Brook set this thing up, the stay at home.
Understand it. Well, when we first came out, it was the Fabia one. So I really, you know, regardless, the Firehouse Shelter is getting a nice, you know, donation from us personally, and like I said, Community Foundation, and also Birmingham Recycle Recovery. And want to congratulate all the graduating class of twenty twenty. We love them so much. And just love that group of kids, and Michael Harden in particular. And now we've got five rising seniors represented just across this dais right now. So it's going to be a heck of a year next year. So.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Andrus. And Mr. Harden?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I want to congratulate my ward mate who works harder than anybody I've ever seen at, at their job as a city council person. But to get that crosswalk, a lot of people think, oh, man, she just called somebody and got it done. I can just tell you, those things, when you're dealing with AlDOT and people like that.
Let me, let me cut you off right there.
You can't do that. Tough. It's tough.
You cannot have a crosswalk across Lake Shore.
All right, so we got one somehow. Thank you to Ms. Andrus. I also want to thank our city. I, last Thursday, I'm driving to work. It's a little after seven. I go by the guys, you know, doing the garbage work. I go about another four hundred yards, and I see two of our employees that are repairing a sidewalk. And then I go a little further, and there's one of our trucks backing up, and another hundred yards doing something. I'm not even sure what they're doing. I thought within about a block, we had three sets of city workers, and it hadn't even gotten to seven ten in the morning yet. No, out there working. Berkeley would have been happy. But, but, you know, in, in this unusual time we are, I felt like here the city is, we're serving the citizens, and we're doing a fabulous job of it. And that's what I was proud of.
Agreed. Thank you so much. Mr. Wolverton, you had one other thing? I'm sorry?
Just one other thing. You know, just in light of everything else, I know education came up tonight. And I know the educators in the city have had to make huge adjustments to how they are able to teach. And for any of them that are coming back, we're looking forward to it. My daughter found out that her teacher is actually moving this summer. So she was just falling apart this afternoon. But that's just a testament to, you know, the impact that they have on our kids. And so we just want to thank them for, for everything that they're doing. And I do think that this new format's been more difficult for them than going to work on a normal day. So.
Has. And thank you, Mr. Wolverton. Just to speak about the schools, and I know we've all, just about every single one of us, I think, has a, has a child in school. But are we not getting, you know, some great experiences with what they are attempting to do in a very successful way of teaching remotely? I mean, we, we all know how difficult that is. And I just want to take a moment to congratulate our school system on doing that. They've certainly done that in a, in a decent way at my house, even though my wife has had to play teacher. So as a teacher assistant, but really a kudos to them, along with their other city departments that have really had their lives turned upside down, whether it's, you know, police and fire and streets and, and everyone having to keep distance, having to take precautions, having to take all kinds of measures to comply with so many state orders to try to keep everyone safe. So I just wanted to take a moment to, to really congratulate and thank our city departments and our, and our school system for a job well done. Also, I'm excited, we heard a little bit about it today, about our school projects and our public safety building. Those projects are just about to come to a conclusion. And I look forward to that. And look forward to those probably ribbon cutting ceremonies for our new public safety building and our new school, high school construction, which really is looking fabulous. And, and that is certainly some, some pleasant, exciting news during some, some difficult times. Ditto to all of you guys talking about us reopening and getting out and restaurants and business. It really is good to, to see all that. And so, so encouraging. Let's all, just so I can make sure, as we sit here with face masks, you know, not a whole lot needs to be said. But remain safe, because the more, the better we do it, the more and the better open these businesses are going to be, most importantly, in our community, much less throughout the Birmingham area. And congratulations to our high school seniors. Thank y'all for mentioning that. What trying times, but I wish, I know we all wish we could, could fix it for them. And Lord knows the parents do too. But, but a big congratulations, and we're very excited for that class. And lastly, just to announce, we will have a work session on June sixth, as we discussed today. Excuse me, June eighth, I wrote it down here. June eighth, thank you, on our sidewalk and construction. And so we'll look forward to having that discussion. All right, so with that whole long list of announcements, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.